Yeah, how you doing? Okay. Here, you want a couple of those?
...of technology in foreign agriculture to identify duplicative federal rural development programs will come to order. Thank you all for being here today and welcome. Today we're discussing government efficiency, which because of our limited resources is more important now than ever. We must find ways to deliver more effective programs using fewer resources. This is particularly important to our rural communities. Previously, this subcommittee has called attention to the fragmentation of the government's aged efforts to address economic development in rural areas. With at least sixteen federal agencies which operate over eighty-eight programs designed to benefit small communities across the country, it's incumbent on Congress to ensure these efforts are implemented in a coordinated fashion. This subcommittee has spent a great deal of time reviewing whether the purpose and goals of agricultural programs under our jurisdiction are being met. Those hearings serve to inform the committee about how scarce resources are being utilized and where opportunities exist to streamline and improve rural development programs. Previous efforts by the current administration, such as the 2010 memorandum of understanding between USDA and SBA, are an acknowledgement of the unorganized approach to rural development we face today. The recently convened White House Rural Councils and other indicators that the administration recognized that their agencies need to coordinate better among themselves. However, none of these efforts by themselves have been a catalyst for permanent change. The efforts put forth so far have been insufficient to address the concerns about duplicative efforts and the lack of coordination among agencies which have the authority to provide assistance to rural America. Stakeholders across the country have shared burdens about the confusing array of agencies and programs, as well as an overly burdensome application process which puts assistance out of reach for small communities which might need it the most. Following congressional direction, the Government Accountability Office has taken an extensive look at some of these issues and will present their initial findings here today. So I hope that their reports and continuing work will serve to advance this discussion and provide additional insight on how our agencies are or aren't working. We also look forward to testimony by USDA to hear more about their efforts to administer the programs we're reviewing. In particular, I hope that additional insight will be provided into how the administration is making tangible changes to the way scarce resources made more accessible and how USDA is leveraging smaller budgets to benefit more communities in a tight environment. We appreciate the work our witnesses put into preparing the testimony and look forward to an in-depth discussion. I would then recognize my friend and ranking member gentleman from California, Mr. Costa.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for holding this hearing. I think it's important for the subcommittee to always exercise its role in appropriate oversight, and we're pleased that we have today here the Government Accountability Office, the GAO, to provide us with information on recommendations that we can go further with, as well as with the United States Department of Agriculture's Rural Development Programs. And their input obviously is always well-taken. I look forward to hearing from the testimony. Rural America faces challenges. I'm always a little bit hesitant to use the word "unique" because I think it's oftentimes an overused word, but they have challenges that we don't have in urban America. And because of the population disparities in our country today, oftentimes our rural elements in our country get overlooked. And that is, I think, one of the important efforts that this committee needs to deal with. The USDA Rural Development has, the United States Department of Agriculture, over five-hundred offices. Whether those offices all are necessary today, I think, is a valid question, but they do, I know, because of my own personal experience, provide help to rural communities for businesses, as well as entrepreneurs, to deal with economic developments, especially in a lot of changes. For example, in many areas, we don't have access to high-speed internet, and it's, you know, it's the dial-up. And yet, these companies, to compete effectively, have to have the same sort of access in a global economy to deal with their products that they are pursuing. So it's important for this subcommittee, I believe, to look at programs that may be duplicative, but we need to ensure that what may appear on paper as duplicative, in practice, is in fact not duplicative, and if it is, then we should address it. Take, for example, the United States Department of Agriculture's Value Added Producer Grant Program, identified as potentially duplicative in the GAO's report. These grants, I know from personal experiences, help agricultural producers and cooperatives provide market value-added efforts to the products they produce on a host of efforts. In 2011, the Blue Diamond Growers in California, you're probably familiar with the almonds that they produce, one of the largest cooperatives in California, maybe in the country, provided a grant to help them launch its first retail products in France. We know that it's not always a level playing field when we're talking about trade throughout the world. It was very helpful to helping Blue Diamond market their products in Europe. In my congressional district as well, the Rosa Brothers have a milk company in Hanford, California. They received a grant to help them offer delivery of local-produced dairy products. Congress created these programs in 2000 on a bipartisan basis. They looked at it again in 2002 and in the 2008 Farm Bills to address areas where other federal agencies were not. I'm not aware of other federal economic development programs that focus in this area on agricultural efforts and products that we can compete with globally if we have a level playing field. So when we consider the rural developments, economic development programs, I think we should also keep in mind, and look at it closely as a subcommittee, Mr. Chairman, the President's proposal in January, combine federal governments, business, and trade agencies. I think this has merit, and we ought to look at it. This is a combination of agencies that is an area where we can get better bang for our buck, I believe. Among the departments and agencies targeted for consolidation are the Department of Commerce and the Small Business Administration. This proposal could go a long ways toward addressing concerns of overlapping federal economic development programs. That's not to say that there aren't other areas that we can look at streamlining on rural development programs, as we're going to look at today and as we'll hear from the witnesses. One of the ways this subcommittee, I think, can help minimize the overlap of USDA's economic development programs with those administered by other agencies is to ensure, and we've talked about this, Mr. Chairman, that the definition of rural are flexible enough to meet the demands in rural America, because we know in many counties across the country, whether it's in Illinois, or whether it's in Kansas, or whether it's in California, or any other state in the Union, that we may have a urban center within a very rural county, and they fall off the definition of what is defined by rural. On February 15th in 2011 and September 13th in 2011, our subcommittee held hearings in which the USDA witnesses were asked by members of this committee on a bipartisan basis about the status of the report on rural definitions that the USDA was required in the 2008 Farm Bill to produce in June 2010. And obviously, we were frustrated that the report had not been submitted, given that the report could be one of the most helpful tools in figuring out how we target our efforts for rural development. Although they have given us responses, I am not optimistic that the report will be provided before the time that we try to reauthorize the 2012 Farm Bill. I don't still, to this day, understand why it is so difficult to provide this report. Since we are examining the USDA's economic development programs, I want to take a minute just to talk about an effort in California that can and should serve as a model for the agencies across the country. We have heard from farmers and ranchers and businesses throughout rural communities that the challenges they face in accessing capital, probably more than any other single factor is what has hit hardest in these past few years, access to capital during tough economic times. In California, the United States Department of Agriculture's Rural Development established the California Financial Opportunities Roundtable. The California Opportunities Roundtable participants include not only the federal entities that include the Small Business Administration, the Federal Reserve Bank of San Francisco, and many other private businesses and state agencies. This innovative capital access project uses impact investing to drive growth in rural communities across California, while achieving financial returns for the investors at the same time. I want to say that I think we ought to look at reauthorizing in the Farm Bill the work that the USDA Rural Development has done in California, which I think serves potentially as a model for the rest of the country with limited Federal Reserve sources. Finally, I want to thank the chairman again and our witnesses today for working with all of us on the subcommittee to ensure that we get the most effective use of the federal tax dollars in rural development programs to meet the needs of rural America. I yield back my time.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. I would also like to note that Mr. McIntyre is actually not a member of the committee, the subcommittee that has joined us today, and in consultation with Mr. Costa, we've agreed and we're pleased to have you here join us today. So with those preliminary comments and my thanks to everybody for being here and the witnesses, let me introduce our first panel of witnesses, who is actually one witness, Mr. Dallas Tonsenger, Undersecretary for Rural Development, USDA, Warson, D.C. Just proceed when you're ready.
Oh, forgive me.
Turning it on works better.
Yeah. Apologies. I'm pleased to have this opportunity to discuss the important role USDA Rural Development plays in the economic development of our nation's rural communities. Through the Consolidated Farm and Rural Development Act of 1972, Congress charged USDA with leading the federal government's effort to ensure a prosperous rural America and declared this task so essential to the peace, prosperity, and welfare of all our citizens that the highest priority must be given to the revitalization and development of rural areas. Secretary Vilsack and I care deeply about rural America. Over the last three years, thanks to resources made available by Congress, we've made historic investments designed to form the foundation of a real economy that's built to last. And under the secretary's leadership through the White House Rural Council, USDA has worked closely with partners across the federal family to leverage resources that maximize benefits for rural communities. As the only department with the primary responsibility of serving rural areas, the presence of USDA field offices, excuse me, in every state helps us serve that specific need of rural communities. Our direct personal contact with these communities creates efficiencies in our program delivery, and the employees who deliver our programs possess expert knowledge of the challenges and opportunities in these communities. Rural Development appreciates the ongoing efforts of the U.S. Government Accountability Office to identify potential overlap in federal programs, and we take pride in our uniquely rural focus and our local program delivery model, which differentiates Rural Development from other federal agencies. Rural Development's utility programs enable communities to maintain and upgrade critical rural infrastructure that often carries a high price tag. Our electric and telecommunications programs are the only federal programs that finance the construction of electric and telecom networks from the beginning to end. Our water and environmental program is the only federal program that lends directly to communities, particularly very small communities. In order to obtain financing from us, water and sewer authorities must demonstrate they've been unsuccessful in obtaining financing elsewhere. Rural Development has been responsive to GAO recommendations to increase coordination of federal programs, water funding systems, and the colonias along the U.S.-Mexican border. In addition, Rural Development recently proposed a modification to our colonias regulation that would allow us to better target resources to the areas with the highest level of need. Rural Development business and cooperative programs provide invaluable assistance to rural small and mid-sized businesses. Our Business and Industry Program is the only federal guarantee program that offers a maximum guarantee of up to $40 million and specifically targets agricultural cooperative businesses. In response to the GAO recommendations, Rural Development has significantly enhanced its collaboration with the Small Business Administration and begun by signing an MOU with SBA in 2010. Our housing programs ensure low and very low-income families throughout rural America have access to safe, decent, and affordable housing. Our Direct Home Loan Program is the only means-tested loan program to directly finance the purchase of home in rural areas. In addition, communities interested in improving essential community facilities like schools, libraries, hospitals, and public safety buildings can walk into a local Rural Development Office to work directly with our knowledgeable employees to apply for funding. In order to continue to serve rural America, we recognize a need to reposition our agency for the 21st century. To that end, we've proposed continual process improvements to ensure that our agency operates in a responsible stewardship of the taxpayers' dollars. Since 2004, Rural Development's portfolio has doubled and now stands at $165 billion. I'm pleased to report that the principal dollars delinquent more than one year remains at approximately 2%. Such results are the product of consistent and proactive servicing of the loan portfolio and working with trusted borrowers to restructure their loans and avoid foreclosures. Improvements to our IT infrastructure remain a central part of our strategy to manage a growing portfolio with reduced resources. Employees need to be able to complete their mission anytime and anywhere to support our customers. Rural Development's innovative work with multi-county regions is an important support mechanism for building an American economy that is built to last. USDA is collaborating with the departments across the federal government to support rural communities that are working in multi-county coalitions that foster economic development on a regional scale. I appreciate the opportunity to work with members of the subcommittee to build a foundation for American competitiveness. Thank you for support of these programs, and at this time, I'd be happy to take your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tonsenger. Let me just start with what I think is probably a self-apparent question, but obviously, one of the charges of this committee, so to speak, will be developing an assessment for how we know how programs are, how they succeed. for how we know how, how programs are, how they succeed or fail or in between, and how those evaluations that you make form future decisions. So my question is, right now, how do you evaluate the success of various programs? And how is that evaluation the basis for how and, yeah, specifically how, is the, those evaluations the basis for, form the basis for future decisions on regulatory changes, applications, and so forth? I think you get a gist of my question.
I, I think the first thing in these kinds of evaluations to remember is this is primarily about individual people and groups of people who have identified within their community something that is needed. In the case of single-family housing borrowers, of course, success is by somebody who's repaid their housing loan and successfully done their housing. For a community that needs a water and sewer system, it's having a successful project that has been well-planned, thought out, and meets the needs of that community, and they've been able to repay their loans successfully. So I think we begin with that to remember that these are about these communities, thousands of leadership people who have come together to come up with a plan, who need resources, and want to accomplish a specific task, maybe a hospital. So if we build a hospital or finance a hospital in a community, the hospital is successfully serving that community. Another important measure is job creation. And we are, we have a couple processes associated with the measurements of job creation. In some cases, we have a calculation for a formula that's been provided for us where they estimate, for example, the construction of a new home and how many jobs that might be created. In our business programs, we've been using a program or process to estimate the number of jobs created, including local judgment by our staff, and then there's a couple formulas that we look at the size of the loan. But we are transitioning into, in that process, to getting actual results, and by 2013, we'll have actual results on loan-making and the jobs created as the projects are implemented.
Within your department, I'm assuming any department of the government, there's always duplicative programs, which, as you look and see where you can make improvements, what programs do you think stand out as administered in a way and implemented in such a way that they do qualify as duplicative and areas that you'd like to see addressed?
Sure. We have approximately 42 tools right now. We work with rural communities, and we like to have it as a one-stop center, of course. But we, we believe there's a couple areas that we would like to work closely with you with. One, we have four programs that provide revolving loan funds for businesses in local communities, and we think there would be a lot of sense in being flexible with the programs so we can still serve that broad audience, but we probably don't need four different programs for that purpose. And while there's some of our grant programs, we believe that could potentially be combined. So this year, we proposed in budget, for example, not to fund the Rural Business Opportunity Grant Program, but to put that funds into the Rural Business Enterprise Grant Program. We think that makes a lot of sense. We don't want to diminish anybody's access, but we'd like to work with you regarding some flexibility in the programs. It may be a reduction in the number of programs that are available for that.
Lastly, you know, and we're here in a few minutes, GAO's assessments, and they've addressed a number of issues and, or have raised a number of issues. Do you feel that you've addressed those issues completely, or do you think you have some work to do in terms of addressing some of the issues they, they raised?
We know we have some, some work to do. We've, we, I know they've scored us as partially addressing the issues. We know we have some progress to make on some of the, the statements. In some cases, we'll disagree with them regarding what's said, but yes, we recognize we need to make some progress.
With that, then, I'd recognize the ranking member, Mr. Costa, for questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I raised the issue on my opening statement, and I don't know if you can report to us, but again, I find it baffling at this point. In 2008, we required as part of the reauthorization of the Farm Bill to work on this rural definition issue, which has been problematic to some of us who represent very rural districts. And, I mean, for folks' information, I know a lot of my subcommittee members know this, but I represent the number-one agricultural county in the nation, Fresno County, over $6 billion. Kern County, I share with another colleague, is number three with over $4 billion in farmgate receipts. Yet Fresno is not defined as being rural because it has a large urban city in the center of the county. Why can't we get this report? It's 2012, it's four years later.
We have provided, as you mentioned, a number of elements to the report that included the information requested regarding the various definitions, and so previous testimonies have provided that. It is true that we have not provided our distinct, what we would recommend for a definition. We are still working internally through that process. I would like to offer some thoughts, though, regarding that. We have the current authority, of course, regard, applies very hard-line numbers that if you cross the number, it becomes a significant, you know, it's no longer eligible. We have, in the immediate sense, coming up October 1st, we will be implementing new census data regarding rural definitions for this, for the, from year 2010. And that means some communities that have grown will no longer be eligible for programs. Some communities may have shrunk and may become newly eligible.
Well, just on that point, I have a couple other questions I want to go out, I mean, for example, and, you know, I don't know how this juxtaposed with that, but the administration has a strong cities, strong communities program that includes six cities across the country. And again, one of them happens to be City of Fresno, which is the sixth-largest city in the state now. But yet USDA is involved in this effort, this model program. You're supposed to be effectively coordinating with federal agencies, but yet it doesn't follow under the definition of rural.
We try to work with each of the efforts that are regionally based to have employees involved, and I believe--
So the definition in this case isn't a hard line?
For the technical discussion that isn't, you know, in fact, you know, we don't--
All right, let me move on again because of time.
Sure.
USDA's Rural Utility Service programs aren't the focus of our hearing today, but I did mention it, I believe, in my statement. Since you raised it in your statement, we're focusing on duplicating federal programs, but I want to know USDA's perspective on claims that rural broadband is duplicating efforts of the Commerce Department's National Telecommunications efforts.
The, the Department of Commerce had Recovery Act funds for that purpose, but they no longer are engaged in those programs, if I understand correctly.
So then it wouldn't be overlapping--
Right, that's correct.
--with, with government-backed programs by private investment companies to expand broadband in our rural areas.
The, with, with private companies, we work with private companies in financing broadband projects.
Finally, I learned that data that the USDA's Economic Research Services, ERS, it shows that federal investment in rural areas is lagging behind investments in urban areas. It seems to suggest that the claims of geographical overlap in the federal programs, in this instance, might be unfounded or at least overstated. Have you seen the data, and are you prepared to provide an assessment that resonate with your experience?
The, I recently saw the data, have not had time to study it. It is my belief that that is the case. We're most anxious to use our resources to try and draw other federal program resources more to rural areas than it has been.
It's your belief, then, that there is not an overlap?
It is my belief that rural areas do not get as much federal resources as urban areas do.
On a percentage-per-cap basis?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chairman, my time's expired, but we will obviously follow up, and I'll submit some additional questions for the record that we would, I would hope we would have a response for.
Thank you, Congress.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. Chair would then recognize the gentleman from, I guess he's not here, Mr. Sis, who recognized the gentleman from Georgia, Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Tonzenger, one of the things you mentioned was flexibility in moving from four programs to one and reducing those administrative costs. And I quite honestly, if we can go from four to one and reduce those administrative costs and give you more flexibility, I, I think that's a great thing and is, and helps the taxpayers. I guess my concern gets back to what my colleague from the other side of the aisle is bringing up, which is the accountability issue. If, if, if you want the flexibility, and we want to give it to you, you have to understand that the accountability measures have to be there, and when the, when the departments ignore the timely filing of reports so that we can make sure taxpayer funds are being spent wisely, then that certainly gives pause to us giving more flexibility. So I'd like for you to speak to that issue, and then I'd, I'd like for you to speak to two other issues. One is the coordination between the USDA and the SBA and how that has worked. And then two is the number of businesses who have received funding from the USDA that are still in business after three years. So those three things, sir.
Sure. Yes, we need to be held accountable. We understand that, and we, we do work our best to file reports in a timely manner. I'm not sure which specific report you, you have concern about. We do believe in transparency, and we know that if we can, we provide you the information regarding our performance, it's helps self-correct because you will bring discipline to that argument. If you would provide me with the particular reports that are lacking, I can give you more information about that.
All right, we'll get that to you.
Okay. Let's see, I'm sorry, please forgive me--
The, the relationship between SBA and USDA and how that has worked with the--
Sure.
--consolidation, if you will--
We, we did establish the memorandum. We are doing trainings, joint trainings between our people that are involved in business lending and trying to learn from each other regarding their abilities in business lending. We have, our program, of course, goes to very large loans where SBA is somewhat restricted in size. We advocate with clients regarding use of the SBA loans, so we have our staff trained on how the SBA loans work. And if it is better suited for them in some cases, then we would advocate that they would pursue an SBA loan. And we also work more closely with the lenders. So we have a group of business and industry loan lenders, some 1,800 banks that like to use our program. We try and coordinate, especially when both SBA and the BNI program is in the same financial institution.
Do you have the information on the, the number or the percentage of businesses that you're involved in the initial or the startup funding that are in business after three years?
I'm sorry, I don't have that with me today, but we will certainly provide it to you.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any further questions. You'll back the time.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. The chair would recognize a gentleman from North Carolina, Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for this opportunity. As former chairman of this subcommittee, I have a couple of questions for the undersecretary, and good to see you again, Mr. Undersecretary. I know USDA Rural Development has taken the lead in addressing one of the most challenging, pressing challenges facing rural America, that is the digital divide separating rural and urban areas. And I know you're familiar with that, with the major success story that we had in North Carolina down in Columbus County, a very rural area that now has, with the help of ATMC, a local provider there, 98% completed its mission to connect nearly 1,000 rural residents who otherwise had no access to high-speed internet. And I still remember the lady last August who ran out of her house when she saw me out there with the crew to say, "Thank you, thank you, my son can now do his homework at home." Instead of having to go all the way back into town to try to go to a library or to the school, he could come home and the young boy can be at home to do his homework. How is USDA uniquely situated, do you believe, to take the lead for the federal government in investing in our rural telecommunications infrastructure as compared to other departments or agencies?
Well, we, we, of course, have a 70-year-old tradition in rural America. We've financed the national rural electric system through decades that saw the very first light bulb and then went to virtually every corner of the United States. We've done the same with the national rural water system, and we've not everywhere with rural water, but we've been building that over a very long period of time. So we have, I think, unique skill sets in making very large credit available to very large organizations and done so in a very positive manner. So our presence in rural America and our long-term history of making financial commitments that work quite well, I think, is a major, major component of what we do.
Can you speak about the effort to build on and build out with respect to broadband investments that are being made by the USDA?
Sure. Along with our responsibility for, for building that system, we also have tools for building businesses. And so we've been conducting webinars, bringing in companies that do direct marketing, and I think that's one of the great hopes that was brought by Congress to, to not only build this system, but make sure economic opportunity happened for those people that live in those communities. So we're, we're, as we build out the system, we're conducting these webinars with local organizations, businesses, and companies, and bringing together those efforts so that people might begin to use this wonderful tool of broadband to, to build their economic lives.
I know a lot of folks are always concerned about duplicative services, but I'd like for you, given your unique position and the experience you've had in, in doing these types of things, to explain to us how USDA Rural Development, that gives significant assistance to much-needed infrastructure investments in water, wastewater, broadband, telephone, and electric infrastructure. We know that EDA, HUD, Department of Transportation, and EPA also do certain aspects of that, but how do you believe that USDA, with its extensive field staff, makes a difference when it comes to rural America so we can get a handle on what's the difference here? And why, why is USDA Rural Development so critical in meeting these needs to keep rural America from being left behind?
Sure. I think the charge, given in my testimony, I talked about the charge in the 1972 Farm Act regarding taking the lead in rural areas. So we see ourselves as an aggressive organization in trying to bring resources. We know that our mission is rural. We know that other federal agencies might not have as aggressive an approach, I mean, generally, they're passive provider of resources. We see our job as taking our resources, trying to bring more to the table with private sector, with other federal agencies, and trying to make sure that rural citizens have accesses to much federal government resources as we possibly get it. So we think our position, having a field structure, and our mandate to be assertive, in our view, in providing these resources, makes us unique.
Thank you. I know that, and I speak for all of us who have constituents and ourselves that live in rural areas, that with this time of year and April 15th fast approaching, that rural America are just as much taxpaying citizens as those in urban and suburban America, and should not be left behind. And I want to thank you for the efforts you make on behalf of rural America and our citizens, the American taxpayers, who do see a return on their investments that we're reminded of every year at April 15th, but the difference it makes in their lives when they see rural broadband, water, and wastewater projects in the infrastructure come to make their lives, quality lives, as they see with their fellow American citizens. God bless you, and thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Now I'd recognize the gentleman from Illinois, Mr. Holgren.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for being here today. A couple of questions. I understand that Rural Housing Service has been trying to get some access to the same employment data that HUD uses to verify tenants' incomes. What benefit would this earned income verification data provide to RHS? And I wonder what's preventing you from using it?
I'll have to ask with my folks what the status of that proposal, I thought we were getting close, if not had gotten to that point, yeah. It would help with the evaluation of loan applications and the timeliness of getting the loan applications done. Having the information available would help us make sure the portfolio performs well and that we are making loans that are for eligible applicants as well as making sure that they get repaid. And I'm sorry, I don't know if many of my staff knows for sure. We'll have to report back on the status of that--
If you can get us information, that'd be great on that, that'd be terrific. GAO and others have proposed a consolidation of the rural housing programs with HUD. I wonder, do you think the rural areas would see the same attention under HUD's management as they currently receive?
I, I believe that we provide rural opportunities to remote rural citizens, and I, you know, I think, and forgive me using the term "unique" for rural America, but the, the people in rural America don't make as much money. And our particular program, I think, the guarantee program especially, is well-suited to rural communities in that we don't have a particular down payment requirement. We've been very successful in repayment, to the point where for the program costs, it doesn't cost-- doesn't cost the taxpayers any money. There's cost, of course, with our system of delivery, but now with the fee that we're assessing, we don't have a cost and the performance of the program has been very good. So I think the uniqueness of the programs for housing addresses the needs of rural people. And I think how to get that delivery in the far corners of rural America becomes the challenge for perhaps HUD and others if it were to be combined.
If it were combined, I mean, is there any expectation or what is the expectation of the amount of savings as you combine the programs as far as salaries being saved, expenses for the agency? And then wondered, if there is a savings, how USDA would seek to reallocate those resources if there was a consolidation or savings of administrative costs?
I've not seen any particular identification of what those savings might be. I would say for the guarantee program, particularly the amount of resources is pretty modest. We're working with private institutions. Financers are doing the great bulk of the work. Much of our work is monitoring of those loans in that case. The direct program costs more because it's more of a hands-on approach with individual people and helping them get good credit. So I'm sorry, I just don't have the information.
Okay. There again, if you have that information, if you can get that, sir, if your staff has that information, that would be helpful. Switching gears a little bit, under the current requirements, a community must be outside of a metropolitan statistical area to qualify for rural housing programs. MSAs are no longer the compact area they once were. Communities located far from the urban core can still be part, considered part of the MSA. Wonder, why do you have this blanket exemption? And do you feel some communities are disadvantaged by this exemption?
Of course, it's required by law. I mean, we have a specific requirement regarding the geographic area that we can serve. And so we have to follow that to the letter in doing that. We are anxious to look at flexibility, and I know Congressman Costa is concerned about the rural definition issue. What we find ourselves with multiple definitions running into is that we can't address the needs of a whole community. We're doing a bit here, a bit there. And we are struggling with that definitional issue in trying to come to grips with what would be the most useful discussion to have. But we, the secretary is focused a good bit on flexibility in the existing programs and we're studying that closely.
What are your recommendations for addressing those definitional issues? Is there proposals that are in place? Is there legislation that is introduced that would address that concern?
Not at this time. We have not made proposals at this time.
Do you expect that to be coming or what's your thought there?
We expect, after review process, to put forward some material on the subject.
Okay. So, but it would take legislative change, you believe, to bring that definition?
Yeah. There are very concise definitions in the statute regarding each program area and we, it would take definitely statutory change.
My time is about expired. I yield back. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Holgren. Lady from Missouri, Ms. Harson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your testimony, you discuss the coordination between USDA and the Small Business Administration in 2010 in effort to improve service delivery to small businesses in rural areas. So what was the result of this coordination?
There has been significant activity. We do training together with the SBA. We provide clients coming in the door information regarding potential use of SBA applications or SBA programs if they're better suited to their needs in that area. So we have ongoing efforts with SBA all the time. And I mentioned earlier that we see our field structure as an opportunity to draw more resources from other federal agencies into rural areas. So we see our tools as an opportunity to leverage those agencies to bring their resources. And so we attempt to do that with as many of the other federal agencies as we can, including the SBA.
That's very good. Does your inter-agency coordination include a conscious effort to determine which agencies should be funding which type of investment, even when both agencies might have clear authority to do so?
We tend to look at the individual applicants and try to advocate with them regarding that. We haven't, I don't think, done a strategy where we looked at which agency would be best suited in an individual area. So I may not be quite understanding your question well enough, and I'll ask my colleagues if they have any thoughts. And my deputy points out that the lender is the applicant to us in the loan guarantee case, and so we work with them.
All right. That makes sense. Now, I missed the first part of your, the hearing due to being at another hearing at the same time, sorry. But when we were talking about consolidating programs here, I came in where you were saying that you believe that four revolving loan funds could be consolidated, also some grant programs. Is that the only duplication or consolidation that you think could be done in the department?
Well, I think we should consider perhaps some of the guarantee programs. You know, we have a guarantee program for large energy projects. We have our business and industry loan guarantee program. And we have a guarantee program in our REIT program, which is also energy-related. We don't have a clear saying, do this, this and this. But, you know, I think if we can look at still having the same audiences that we're all trying to serve and limit or reduce the number of programs that are applicable, it might be of value. Less NOFA's we have to put out, less, you know, procedures we have to go through. So we don't have a defined kind of agenda on that. We're just suggesting if we combine some of the toolsets and broaden them out, give more flexibility, as the secretary has talked about, it would make some sense.
Sounds like some good ideas. Have you put that into a format that could be transferred over to a legislative initiative?
We have not, but we'd be more than happy to work with the members on any proposals you might want to consider.
I would be interested in seeing in writing some of your suggestions of specific programs you think could be consolidated or to increase efficiencies and that we can move forward with, because I think that makes sense for the taxpayer and for the people that we're trying to serve. So thank you for what you're doing for rural America. It's very important. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am.
Yield back my time.
Thank you. With that, I believe there are no more questions. We thank you for your testimony and appreciate your being here and look forward to hearing from you again.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
You now assemble the next panel, which is essentially one witness. Our witness now of the second panel is Mr. Williams Shear, Director, Financial Markets and Community Investment, Government Accountability Office. Please begin when you're ready, Mr. Shear.
Thank you. Chairman Johnson, Ranking Member Costa and members of the subcommittee. I'm pleased to be here this morning to discuss our work on overlap, fragmentation and potential duplication in economic development programs. As part of our series of reports on these programs, most recently in February 2012, we reported on the existence of overlap and fragmentation among those federal economic development programs that support entrepreneurs. Specifically, we focused our analysis on 53 of the 80 economic development programs at agriculture, commerce, HUD and SBA that fund entrepreneurial assistance, because these programs appear to overlap the most among the 80 economic development programs. My testimony today is largely based on information on these 53 programs that is discussed in our recent February 2012 report. Specifically, this testimony discusses our work to date on, first, the extent of overlap and fragmentation among these programs, and, second, the availability of meaningful performance information on these 53 programs. I will also provide an overview of the nature of our ongoing work. In summary, based on our work to date, we have found that programs that support entrepreneurs overlap based not only on their shared purpose of serving entrepreneurs, but also on the type of assistance they offer. The programs generally can be grouped according to at least one of three types of assistance. First, technical assistance. Second, financial assistance. And third, government contracts. Much of the overlap and fragmentation among these 53 programs is concentrated among programs that support economically distressed and disadvantaged areas and programs that assist disadvantaged in small businesses. In addition, many of these economic development programs also operate in both urban and rural While most of the 53 economic development programs that support entrepreneurs have reasonable performance measures and tend to meet their annual performance goals, few evaluation studies have been completed and little evaluative information exists that assesses the program's effectiveness at what they were, what they're intended to serve. In addition to the work discussed in our recent report, I will mention two other sources of information. First, progress made by the agencies in implementing collaborative practices we had recommended. And second, a continuing work to be discussed in a report on economic development programs we plan to issue this summer. With respect to collaborative practices, in April 2010, USDA and SBA signed a memorandum of understanding. The MOU defined and articulated a common outcome focused on improving service delivery to small businesses in underserved rural areas. USDA's April 2011 survey of state directors indicates progress under the MOU in several areas, including field offices advising borrowers of SBA's programs, referring borrowers to SBA and its resource partners, and exploring ways to make USDA and SBA programs more complementary. However, we have not received comparable information from SBA indicating progress in this area. In addition, HUD, USDA and SBA have provided limited evidence that they have taken steps to develop compatible policies or procedures with other federal agencies. And this also goes to the issue of defining roles and responsibilities. With respect to our remaining audit work, a large part of it will focus on the extent to which the programs are duplicative, overlapping or fragmented. And we are especially focusing on the provision of economic development assistance by the various agencies and programs in rural America. Chairman Johnson and Ranking Member Costa, this concludes my prepared statement. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you for your testimony. I have one question. Your testimony indicated that most of the fragmentation found among these programs is concentrated in programs which have carve-outs for economic or other eligibility criteria. In your judgment, do those set-asides and carve-outs lead to a fragmentation of program delivery?
You've asked a very good question. And to a large degree, after the carve-outs and the set-asides can create certain challenges in delivering programs, yet it involves a view by the Congress and others toward what types of targeting is appropriate in programs. So it's one of the challenges in terms of how programs are structured. So for example, for counseling and training programs, some of the programs across the agencies are more focused on lower-income populations than some of the others. If you were going to try to combine the programs, it would be a challenge to have programs under common administration that would be able to provide those carve-outs. So yes, the carve-outs can create a challenge in terms of avoiding fragmentation, but nonetheless, we think there are opportunities to try to address the fragmentation issues.
I guess all the questions I have. I'd recognize the gentleman from California and the ranking member, Mr. Costa.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Shear, it's my understanding that the GAO, when doing your evaluation on the potentially duplicative nature of the federal economic development programs on the four agencies, that you looked at statutory and regulatory population requirements. Is that correct?
Yes. In our initial work, which we reported on a little over a year ago, our first attempt there was to look at the design of these 80 programs. And there we were focusing very much on what the programs could fund. So it was our first high-level look at these programs.
Is that a useful tool, do you think, in preventing overlap?
Being here today, I can say that, yes, I think it was a very effective tool, in the sense that we were able to capture information on how programs were designed to identify what should be part of the landscape to drill down on. So where the question was a year ago, how much could be made of what we found, we viewed it as more of a step to lead to what the agencies could focus on and what we could focus on going forward. And that's why we're drilling down in this area. So to take it, if I could take it one step further.
I was going to say, so what's your follow-up going to be?
Our follow-up here is that, in one thing I'm reporting on today, you notice we use the words overlap and fragmentation, because in terms of the drill-down we have done among these programs and the information we have collected and continue to collect and examine, is that we have a story that's largely of overlap rather than duplication. We certainly have a story of fragmentation where you have various parties doing, various agencies undertaking activity that should be coordinated in a better fashion.
So in your final report, again, because my time is limited here, are you going to then make recommendations to the subcommittee, the full committee, on how we can avoid the overlapping and duplication in these four agencies?
Yes. The biggest part and the drill-down on rural America and in reaching out to stakeholders in the economic development process in rural America is to try to get an idea as far as to what degree there might be duplication in some of the, for example, loan guarantee programs, some of the technical assistance programs that rural development has versus SBA and EDA. And so we're getting a sense of a drill-down.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. We're doing more of a drill-down to see to what degree.
And what timeline are you going to report to?
We expect to report at the end of July on that.
Of this year?
Of this year. What we expect to recommend in terms of what our expectation of recommendations, I will just list one of them. Under the Geper Modernization Act, the agencies are actively involved in cross-cutting issues in terms, including serving small businesses. And so what we're looking for is informing decisions on strategically how overlap and fragmentation and how service delivery can be improved by looking for opportunities for those to, so we're going to be recommending actions that will better able the Congress and the agencies to better serve the economic development needs of its communities.
A couple of quick questions on your report to us. Are you going to look at significant differences in the costs of delivery?
Yes. We have collected extensive information from all four agencies on the cost of delivery. The data quality varies among the agencies. We continue to ask them for more refined cost data. So we're really trying to push as far as we can based on what data the agencies have.
You'll be able, you think, to make recommendations on which models work best?
We think we'll be able to inform decisions. We're not in the business of picking which programs, you know, should be the winners or losers or what agencies, but to provide information that will inform decisions about how government programs and economic development programs can be structured to be more effective. Among the things we might find is that the data itself that agencies collect and how the agencies, more importantly, how the agencies use that data to evaluate the effectiveness of their programs, their mechanisms and other ways they go about doing their business. We are, we might make recommendations in the area about how better data collection and evaluation could lead to better decisions in program delivery.
Well, we'll look forward to those reports in July, that report in July. And, Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. Mr. Shear. Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'd like to follow along that same thought process, if you would. Mr. Shear, basically what you're telling us is that the agencies are not collecting enough data to determine whether or not the programs that are being funded or the loans are an efficient or appropriate use of tax dollars. Is that correct?
Yeah. Let me answer it in two steps. And we make a distinction between program metrics that are collected under, you know, on an annual basis, and what we call evaluations of effectiveness. So I'll use an analogy to counseling and training programs by SBA, where SBA has three major counseling and training programs. They do have certain metrics on businesses served and certain metrics about just how many people and how many businesses are being trained and receive counseling. And that can be useful within itself. But then what they do is that they conduct periodic evaluations, where they reach out to those who receive counseling and training, and they receive information from those businesses as far as how they valued that counseling and training, how it has helped them grow their businesses. And then it collects data on how well the businesses do, because after all, one of the measures of success of how well the programs do is how well the businesses do after receiving the counseling and training. So we're looking for more of an evaluative approach by the agencies as part of managing their programs.
Wouldn't it make sense? I mean, every employer out there that receives an SBA loan or SBA assistance, certainly the tax ID number of that employer is on the application with the SBA. Why couldn't you simply look at the number of jobs created and, based on the payroll tax number that's already being provided?
With jobs created, you brought up a very important point. Jobs created is one of the metrics that tends to be used for GEPRA purposes, that we haven't examined that avenue to collect data on jobs created. We certainly have looked at a number of inspector general reports over time on how agencies do collect data on jobs created. Part of our issue with jobs created is it's hard to create a benchmark of what jobs would have been available by both that particular employer and other employers in the absence, you know, of the SBA assistance. So we are looking for an approach that just looks a little bit more, how well do the businesses do that get the loans? So, for example, in 2007, we recommended SBA for its 7A program. It was already collecting a lot of data on its businesses that get what are called 7A loan guarantees, that they should use that information to try to provide some evaluative information as far as that the businesses that loans are being made to by lenders in the program of whether those businesses are actually succeeding. So you bring up a very important point we haven't quite looked at, but we do look at job metrics as being important to collect, but we're also looking for something that's more general in terms of what's the purpose of the program.
And, Mr. Shear, I appreciate your comments. I think maybe that's where the breakdown, if you will, in an entrepreneur and small business owner who's only been in Congress for 12 to 13 months like myself is and where maybe people who have been in the Beltway a lot longer are, in that the number-one issue is jobs. Americans want to go back to work. And if the SBA is going to be there, and I do believe that the SBA has been a successful government program, if you want to refer to it as that, but if the loan does not create additional payroll and additional jobs, then the funds probably should have gone somewhere else where they did create additional payroll and jobs. And so I don't understand why it's so hard to get that metric of the payroll associated with the tax ID number that got the loan with the SBA backing, because the payroll's going to be reported according to the tax ID number, and the loan is going to be reported according to the tax ID number. I don't understand why it's so difficult to look at, you know, this tax ID number, there was a million dollars' worth of payroll generated before the loan. Three years after the loan, total annual payroll now is $2 million. That seems to me like it would be pretty simple and help us as the members evaluate what the most efficient programs are with putting Americans back to work, because that's our goal is to put them back to work.
I think you raise a very important point, and even though we haven't looked at that specific question, I'll certainly bring it up with SBA, have they ever explored this? But I know from another SBA program that's not included in this work, we've done a lot of work on their disaster loan program, and we know that we've been involved a lot in recommending ways that SBA and IRS can work together in terms of verifying income and other information by sharing information for those who apply for disaster loans. So perhaps some type, that might provide some type of a model for what you're suggesting.
Well, and you don't, you're not requiring the entrepreneur or the business owner to provide any additional documentation. You're not breaking it down to individual taxpayers, or you're still protecting their personal identity. You're taking a tax ID number that the SBA has and looking at the total growth in wages once the loan was delivered. Mr. Chairman, I know I've gone over my time. Thank you, sir, and I thank you, sir, for your testimony, and I yield back.
Thank you.
I have no further testimony or questions. I don't believe Mr. Scott does, and nobody else is here. So we just want to thank you for your testimony.
Thank you very much.
I have no closing statement to make. Mr. Costa has already had to go to another committee. And so, again, I thank the members of the committee and the witnesses for your testimony. I thank our excellent Republican and Democratic staffs for the good work that they always do, and appreciate your putting this together. Under the rules of the committee, the record of today's hearing will remain open for 10 days to receive additional material and supplementary written responses from the witness to any question posed by a member. This hearing, then, of this subcommittee is adjourned.